Please address.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this report meeting, I have just applied for your order, and you will take your place. Sir, we know this is Natalie Cole from here. Natalie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Limpy. Missy Hermes here. Stephen Viglino.
Here.
We have a court. Thanks. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So.
A second? All second. All in favors say aye. Those opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved. So we will move to our reports. And Renee, do you want to do that report right now? Please, so listed right away.
Good.
You first.
So we have Brian from IBALEE doing a report on our audit.
Unfortunately, we cannot get it up on screen.
Listen closely from Renee's computer.
Yes, Brian, I don't know if you've heard that or not, but we're ready for your reports here.
Oh, okay, so can everyone hear me okay?
Actually, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
He can't hear us.
Yes.
Okay, and you have printed copy, so I will be sure to do my best in describing what page I'm on. Let me get it all set up here.
Brian, are you starting with the executive summary or the full audit report?
Yep, we'll just focus on the executive summary.
Perfect.
Tonight, and let me, I'm going to still share my screen, just so if anyone's logged, you can take a peek at the laptop. Okay. Okay, here we go. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Brian Steppavenger, partner with IBALEE, providing to you the results of the fiscal year 23 audit. As I just mentioned, my focus tonight will be on the executive summary, which is a 20-page document, really pulling out the highlights of the full audit. If you have that full audit in front of you, you can see it's a lengthy document, unfortunately continues to grow as new accounting regulations are implemented and required. That continues to grow, and honestly, it gets to be more and more challenging to fully understand, even for me as a CPA and someone who deals with this all the time. So we have put a summarized version for you together, as well as providing some historical information, which I think generally does a much better job of a high-level overview for the governing body, for the audit results, and also just to see some historical trends. So I'll walk you through it. I'll pause periodically for questions or comments, but certainly if you see something, you can interject. I want to make sure that this is as interactive as it needs to be for you tonight. So that executive summary document, if we go, it'll probably be the third page in. At the top, it'll say audit opinion, and this is where we're going to walk. I'm going to walk you through the audit results before we get into the numbers. So the audit opinion, when you hire IBALEE to perform your audit, ultimately what you're asking us to do is perform procedures so that we can gain comfort to be able to provide you our professional opinion on your audit or on your financial statements. You received a clean audit opinion, and really what that represents is you're following all the correct accounting rules, the numbers contained in that audit are materially accurate, and all the required disclosures are also included. That is ultimately what we provide you, and it is a good, clean audit opinion based on our audit procedures. Also, in any one year that any local government entity spends more than $750,000 of federal grant dollars, you are required to have a separate audit specifically over those federal funds. It is a very compliance-heavy audit, but also looking at internal controls. During the fiscal year 2023, approximately 1.8 million in total federal awards were expended. And then the program that we focused on, it's a complicated calculation provided by the federal government. We don't look at the entirety of those awards. We generally are going to look at the larger programs. In 2023, the guidance provided a calculation that we were required to look at the child nutrition cluster, which is about $1 million, the largest program overall. Also, we received an unmodified or clean opinion on the federal funds. One more slide, and then I'll pause before we get into some numbers. This is a slide just highlighting the findings. In the back of the audit report, the very past last few pages has these in much more detail, but overall at a high level, two findings related to the financial statements, which these are very common in really smaller to midsize, not just local governments, but also private businesses, just allowing or asking the auditor to participate in the preparation of the financial statements, which means that full audit document, which is lengthy and continues to grow, just having us or asking us to help assist with preparing and writing those financial statements. And then also at year-end, also very common to have the auditor assist with year-end journal entries. So state aid receivables, property tax receivables are the big areas. In the school district in Minnesota, where it's a fairly complicated set of calculations to come up with what those amounts are, very common historically with this district that we have these two findings, also very common with other districts we work with in the area and across the state. When it comes to the federal awards audit, no findings there, which is a very, very good thing. We also spend a lot of time looking at legal compliance that the state auditor's office asks us or requires us to look at. Heavily focused in bidding, bank accounts, pledge collateral, conflicts of interest. There's a variety of areas that we look at. No findings in relation to that legal compliance area. So I'll pause there before we get to numbers and graphs to see if there's any questions on the audit results for fiscal year 23.
Not here.
Doesn't sound like it, Brian.
Okay, wonderful. We'll get into cash and investments, go from there. This is a representation of all the cash and investments across the district, but it does not include any funds remaining in the capital projects fund, because those funds tend to be significant and, of course, very dedicated to be used in a specific or group of capital projects. We do not include those on this graph, so this would include really everything else. General fund would be the main fund and does represent the largest amount here, but also community service fund, food service fund, debt service fund. You can see slow, steady growth the first few years of this table, and then a big jump in 2022, mostly timing differences related to federal awards. Of course, a lot of pandemic and COVID-related money coming into the district. At the end of fiscal year 23, just over $19 million in cash and investments excluding capital projects. So a slight decrease, not a big fluctuation. Overall, a good, strong cash position, also knowing that a good portion of that is dedicated to be used on future capital projects, really in the short term. And I'll highlight that in a few pages. But overall, a slight decrease in cash and investments, but pretty steady from fiscal year 22. Questions on that slide? Here in that, we'll continue into the general fund. So in the general fund, this is the main operating fund of the district. We will focus most of the remaining time on the executive summary, talking about the general fund. And the first one, looking at EEM served. So at the top, it says EEM served. EEM stand for average daily membership, really just a representation of the student account in the district, the main driver of aid revenues for both state aid, federal aid, other aids. You can see a slight decline from 2022 to 2023, which you will see impact. The next slide, which is the budget to actual, but overall, you know, in the grand scheme of things, fairly, fairly, particularly steady from the prior year. Budget to actual is the next slide, and I apologize, the original versions that we sent you containing some errors on this budget to actual, only in this document, not in the full audit. Full audit is accurate. Quick, we made some updates this afternoon. Hopefully, you have that revised version in front of you. Again, the full audit contains the accurate version, and now I provided an updated slide tenure with this budget to actual. So what we're going to do, first of all, I'll explain what it is exactly, and then I'll let you know where the focus will be. So this is really a representation of what revenues came into the general fund during the year, as well as what expenditures went out, and then the other miscellaneous activity, which is a fairly significant one towards the bottom here. But then going left to right, the first two columns represent the budget columns. If you were to modify your budgets at all, that would be represented in the second column. There was no budget modification in fiscal year 23, which you are not required to, but if you did, we would present that final budget as well. So really, the first two represent the budget, which those numbers did not change throughout the year. The third column, the actual column, so this is the actual audit, so audited results in the general fund, revenues coming in, expenditures going out. And then the far-right column is really what I will focus on on this page, is the variance between the budget and the actual results. So really, we like to go through in this presentation and just highlight how you did compared to your budget in the general fund.
Brian, do you want to?
I'm going to keep it fairly. Yes, go ahead.
I did not print the updated sheet. I put a copy in the electronic agenda, but if you want to just point out the difference, the update that you made on that one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So if you are looking at the printed version that you have in front of you, in the revenue section, there is a line called other, and it is in the actual column. So in the actual column, in the other row, the revenue that you have in front of you in the printed copy is higher by $575,000, which was inaccurately included twice on this page in the printed version. We have since revised that. So the number that I have in the other revenues is roughly 2.1 or just under 2.2 million, and that's just because of a reclassification of $575,000, which you go down towards the bottom, you'll see that in the sale of equipment line. So the sale of the chiller, again, only in the printed version that you have, was accidentally included twice. It should not have been. It should come out of that revenue, which is, which is what I have on the screen, and unfortunately, it's a very small screen for you. But that actually did result in the revenues being extremely close to budget, within $140,000 on a $37 million budget, which really is an incredible job. You were a little bit over budget, 0.4% is the final result. I know that's a little bit different than what you have in your printed version, but 0.4% generally on the revenue side, we want you to be within 5%. If you were within 5%, we would tell you, great job, you know, building your budget and then hitting that budget. You were within 0.4%, so a very, very good job.
It's stubborn, Renee.
A few fluctuations in the various revenue rows there, but overall, very, very close, and indeed, a little bit over budget. On the expenditure side, which is that next group, a lot of numbers there, of course, focusing on the far-right column and then looking at the total expenditures, and just under that, you'll see you were about 1.1% over budget on expenditures, meaning you spent a little bit more than budgeted. Overall, really just capital outlay related, had some additional expenditures, more than what you had budgeted for. You had a lot going on, and I know going forward, you're going to continue to have a lot going on, chiller project, you know, really starting on Lincoln Phase Two, other miscellaneous projects, so a little bit over budget, but still within 1.1% expenditures. Generally speaking, we like to see that within 2% to 3%, but you're here within 1.1%. So overall, on your budgeting, a very, very good job on both the revenues and expenditures. As you continue down, you'll see that $575,000, that's the sale of the chiller. It's confusing and doesn't really make a lot of sense. That's not, from an accounting standpoint, to be recognized as revenue, but really supposed to be shown as in other financing sources. That's why it's way down here and not in the revenues. Don't ask questions why. I don't have a great justification, other than that's what they tell you it has to be in. But overall, that sale is accounted for. And within the general fund, had a surplus this year of about $246,000, took that total general fund to an ending fund balance of just under $14.9 million. So we'll talk about what that means in a few slides. Both the takeaway on this page, great job, budget to actual. If you think way back, when, what, probably spring of 2022, setting your fiscal year 23 budget, you know, there's, there's some educated guesses there. I shouldn't say guesses. There's some good educated budget amounts that are in there, but a lot of it, some of it, you know, are your best estimates, your best guesses, and overall, a very, very good job. So questions or further comments on that budget to actual for the general fund?
Nope. Looks good.
Okay. So important to have a positive fund balance. We're going to talk about what all of that means, and then I go through a few slides fairly quick here. I want to get to the next page that has some numbers on it, which at the top, it says changes in UFR's fund balances. Changes in UFR's fund balances, another slide, unfortunately, a lot of numbers, not a lot of colors. We're going to get into the colors after that. So this is really just taking a look at what was your fund balance, really your reserves in your general fund at the beginning of the year on the left, and the far right is the end of the year. The very bottom amount is your total. So I just got done telling you at the end of the year, in your general fund, just under $14.9 million. So if you look at the very bottom right of that page, you'll see that $14,889,754. It's governmental accounting, which means it can't be as simple as that's the number that you can look at and move on. It's broken down into a lot of different categories. A few categories that I want to point out, restricted. So as the state sends you money, or as you have student activities, scholarship activity, those are restricted funds to be used only in those categories. A lot of these are restrictions. So at the end of the year, even though you have money left over, you have to show those as restricted, because they have to be spent in those areas going forward. Anything left in excess of that, you then can set aside if you want for future projects, so not legally restricted by an outside third party like the Department of Education/State of Minnesota, but just internal earmarks. So this year, you've assigned, that's the terminology used, you've assigned for three different areas, the Lincoln School project, the facility project, and for roof projects. So a significant amount set aside internally earmarked going forward to be used in those areas. If you were to ever change your mind, you could. You don't have to spend it in that. You are certainly intending to. So that's, that's set aside. And then the very, I shouldn't say the very bottom line, the line that says unassigned is truly your rainy day or your reserves. After all the restrictions are set aside, your internal earmarks or your assignments are set aside, that is what's left over as unassigned, roughly 7.3 million. So about half of your total fund balance is truly your rainy day or reserves. Those are some big numbers. We're going to break that down into a different format, also look at them in a graph format, which is a lot easier to understand, I think, before we move on. Questions on restrictions, assignments, everything I just talked about? We'll keep talking about them. Okay. So the next slide, at the top, it says total fund balances. So this is just a representation in graph format, really where you were at in 2014. You could see you were a very, very low amount, and at that point in time, might have been either still in that statutory operating debt phase or just coming out of it. I can't quite tell. I think, I think you were probably still in that SOD phase, and then came out of it in 2015, and then you see good, steady growth through 2021, a significant uptick in 2022. A lot of that related to the COVID and pandemic-related federal funds, and then able to maintain, actually increased that a little bit in 2023. The big difference, though, on this page is that green. That green is a representation of the assigned fund balances, or really those internal earmarks. Historically, you have not set aside any dollars for internal purposes. In 2023, you did, just under 6.7 million for those three items I talked about on the previous slide. I'm going to go back, Lincoln School project, facility project, and roofs. Allowable to do it. I love that you've done it. It really shows that, yes, we've got some fund balance that we have dedicated to some capital projects. So overall, the total, a slight increase, but really a different makeup going forward for fiscal year 23. The next slide is just some recommendations regarding, you know, a lot of times the question that we have is, what should our fund balance be? And the response is always, well, it's not, it's not us as auditors to tell you what it should be. We can provide you guidance. First of all, you have your own internal policy, which is the first paragraph on this page. You really want it to be no less than 8%, which is about $3 million. And then there's also a national organization called the GFOA, and they recommend no less than two months, which is approximately 17%. That's about 6.3 million. Again, recommendations, if you go above or below that, there's no penalties, just to give you some good guidance, and this is very useful guidance that you have. Okay. Final one on the general fund, and probably my favorite one, because I think it does a good job of showing you how you're doing in that general fund compared to where you'd like to be, is taking a look at the unrestricted and unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures. So taking those big dollar amounts that we've been talking about and turning that into a percentage. Your internal goal is 8%. That's represented by that red or maroon line towards the bottom. You always want to be after, above that line. That's your internal policy. You can see the first two years on this graph, you were below that. In 2016, you rose above that, and you've been above it ever since. You can see every year is very consistent. The blue and the green are the same. However, that's changed in 2023. And quick explanation for that is you've decided to do those assigned fund balances or those internal earmarks. The difference between the blue and the green are those internal earmarks. The reason we show this blue, which is a combination of both your assigned and unassigned, is that that is how MDE analyzes your fund balance. So they look at your fund balance as it's over 35%, where when you're analyzing it against your own policy, you're saying, hey, we've got some internal earmarks for some capital projects. We actually don't want to include those. We want to only include what's truly unassigned, and that's represented by this green line. You're right under 20%, probably between 19 and 20%, which is very, very consistent with where you've been the last five, six, seven years or so. Again, overall, very strong, taking advantage of your marking of about half of that. Okay, that was a lot of the general fund. There were some differences and changes from how you've done things historically, only because you've taken advantage of that fund balance and done some internal earmarks. So I definitely want to pause before we move on to other funds, and just see if there's any questions or added comments or discussion points.
Doesn't sound like it, Brian.
Okay, we'll move into the other funds. These are going to be very high level. First one, the community service fund. So all we're going to do here is take a look at what are the ending fund balances, essentially ending reserves in this fund. You can see in the community service fund, kept going up. At the end of 2020, it was up, and then 2021, pretty much down to zero, about $700,000 difference. And so I'm sure you're sitting there, or at least some of you are, going, what happened in 2021? You took advantage of a one-time allowable transfer out to the general fund. So normally, transfers out of community service funds are not allowed in question statute. However, because of the pandemic and the unique situation that certain districts were in, the Department of Education did allow a one-time transfer out, and a lot of districts took advantage of that, and we would, would have recommended and likely recommended that to the district, take advantage of that. And so that transfer out was done on, and then really, in the years since then, it's maintained, you know, mostly status quo deficit that continues into 2023. It's at about $120,000 deficit in 2023. So really, just pay attention to that. There's no penalties if you're in deficit. Really, the goal of this fund should be more of a break-even type fund, you know, keeping that much more closer to zero in the long run. So just pay, pay attention to that going forward. You don't want to get that too, too much into a deficit, hopefully start to come back in the future years. Questions on the community service fund?
No, we could talk about that one briefly. We talked about that one briefly in the finance committee meeting last week, Brian, and we'll probably do a transfer from the general fund to the community fund to get rid of that deficit.
Perfect. Perfect. So you can transfer in. I just got done talking about transfers aren't allowed, transfers out are not allowed, but you can certainly transfer in, and very common for districts to utilize, Renee, what you just mentioned and the finance committee discussed, which is a transfer in from the general fund to eliminate that deficit. So very common that we see. Community service funds in the last three years have been extremely volatile because of all the unique activities and the ramping back up. So very common, and good to hear that that was discussed. Next one is the food service fund. Again, you know, unique things, looking at this year, the last couple of years, some fairly significant fund balance levels in that food service fund compared to previous years. You know, the first eight years of this graph having much lower and much smaller fund balance levels. This maroon line is a representation of the maximum allowable fund balance. If you ever exceed that, which you did in 2022 and again in 2023, all that means is that the Department of Education needs you to do some paperwork, I think it's probably electronic paperwork now, that just says, hey, how are you going to spend that down? What's your plan to spend that down? They essentially don't want you and other districts to have, to charge so much for food to your students, teachers, other professionals, that you're making, you know, essentially, quote-unquote, making money in that fund. Now, that fund in this district, and really every district we work with, has exceeded that maximum level the last couple of years because of all the federal funds that went flowing in there. It, it's just happening. So MDE has been very, very flexible, you know, giving, giving most districts a couple of years before it gets into a formal plan, you know, let kind of the pandemic activity go away, get back to normal operations, and see if it comes down on its own. But that's, so that's more of a heads up. Again, MDE has been very flexible in recent years, because they know what, they know what's happened in that fund. Comments or questions on food service fund?
You know, just on that line, is it something that legislatively wise, we'd have to go back to get that law changed? Is that kind of what would happen? I'm just thinking with the free and reduced now, everybody getting free meals, you know, this, I think for most districts, they're going to end up having pretty large fund balances in the food service for a while at least.
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, what is, I haven't heard, what is the Department of Education going to do? Because they definitely have been flexible on their interpretation of the existing statute. Will they continue to be flexible? I don't know. Logically, though, well, I shouldn't say logically. Yeah, I mean, logically, I won't go back to that word. Logically, something should be changed, because it's a very significant change that's now in place with the free and reduced. So what, what's going to happen? You know, maybe some more flexibility within that statute? Does the statute need to change itself? It's very possible it needs to. Yeah, you might want to work with your local representatives to see, also MDE, see what their interpretation is going to be going forward over the next couple of years, but very possible that's something that, that should happen to just alleviate this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the last slide of substance is really just a couple of things that we want to point out. First of all, Inflation Reduction Act, which is new in 2022, it's really energy incentives. If there's construction projects, which you've got ongoing construction projects, and if there's anything that is energy efficient within those construction, construction projects, the district can benefit from this Inflation Reduction Act. Previous to this new version becoming law, governments and nonprofits did not have access to these funds. It was very specific in this new one that governments and nonprofits now do have access to these funds. It's very unique. It's fairly complicated, so I wanted to keep it at a very high level. to keep it at a very high level. But definitely work with your contractor, your architect, your engineers, see if they're aware of it. We've got a team at IBALE that has worked on this historically on the for-profit side, and now they are helping our governments and nonprofits just interpret and understand what this means. But essentially, you can get money back if you're investing in energy incentive, or I'm sorry, energy efficient type constructions, equipment, purchasing vehicles. So an awareness thing, reach out to me if you want to learn more. Like I said, this is at the highest level that I can give it to you. We can have a separate discussion if you're interested. And then also a reminder, we don't get in front of the board more frequently, really, than once a year to provide these audit results to you. So really, just wanted to let you know that we're in touch throughout the year with leadership at the district, either through just Q and As, they're reaching out with questions, and we're helping them through things. We also have a lot of online publications, webinars, and if there is ever anything unique, we have a lot of specialists at IBALE that they have access to. So just always like to take advantage of being in front of you once a year to make you aware of that and remind you of that. So the last, last one, it's not the last one, the second-to-last one, is just an opportunity for any final questions before I say thank you and log off. Any other questions? Karen Dunn, okay, thank you. An annual audit is not necessarily fun every day.
Oh, it's a blast.
It's a lot of work. You know, I say it's work for us, but it's a lot more work for everyone in the district to get ready. You know, all those year-end adjustments, gather all the information that we need to complete our work. So it's a lot of work for Renee and everyone else. They're so big thank you to be able to get through it and be able to present those results to the board here in November. So if that's it, I will log off. And a final thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate it.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks for participating. Sorry, could not get that up on a very stubborn screen. Okay, then we'll move on to our next report, which is Kirby Anderson.
Okay, yes, a lot of committee meetings this last month. Because of the weird way the calendar worked out this last month, we met, the 544 Foundation has met twice. Met on October 12th at noon. And some of the highlights of that meeting, we had 119 classroom wish list requests. 109 of them were fully funded by the foundation for a total of just over $24,000. We served 500 tacos in a bag on Otter Pride Night, $5 a meal, for a total of fundraiser of $1,480. The Grant Scholarship Committee met and approved 24 different grants, and I'll just go over a few of them. There was yoga mats for a couple hundred dollars, some puzzles and activity books for fourth grade, that was over $500. Just about $600 for compression vests for special ed co-op. $720 for jerseys for the middle school reach students. $1,100 for flexible seating for fourth grade classroom. $1,250 for bugles for the sixth grade general music class and middle school band. $1,200, almost $1,300 for 30 sets of binoculars for Prairie Science. $3,700 for cameras and lenses for the digital photography and yearbook class. $4,500 for four picnic tables for the kindergarten playground at Lincoln, and almost $10,000 for three interactive panels for the Otter preschool. So the grand total of all of those 24 grants was 30, just over $35,000. So that was a pretty significant amount of money there. Foundation also met on November 9th. Natalie gave a presentation for a possible fundraiser for the science that go in the arts of high school seniors. And the director's report, we're working with JK Sports on Foundation Apparel. We have the Fall and Winter newsletters going out in the next two weeks. The major donor newsletter will go out by Christmas. Working on the Otter Fieldhouse game schedule, we're going to have an alumni night in January during one of the basketball games. And we just found out just the other day that one of our alumni from Fergus Falls High passed away and left $208,000 to the foundation. So they'll probably put some information out on that. And one future agenda item, I know that the board chair, Kelsey, and Mindy, who are going to meet with Lieutenant Drake to see if there's any special needs in the district that the foundation can address, because they have a balance right now of just under $2 million. So it's all good stuff on the foundation. On the, I hope I have a computer here, and activities, the Activities Committee did meet, and we met on Friday, November 10th. Talked about middle school weight room, went over the different fees, possibilities of different options at the weight room. Revealed the gymnastics balance center contract, which was on our agenda for tonight. Talked about an update on the gold gym floor as far as when it's going to be done. Right now, we're looking at the, just towards the end of July to have that floor done. Talked about the training room needs, fencing around the football field, and swimming pool schedule, and talked about a little bit about archery over Community Ed. So a lot of things going on in activities, and some of those we have on agenda tonight, including the gymnastics. And finance, I lost my notes here, but we had a Finance Committee meeting, and we talked primarily about the audit, and also a number of other issues on there. We talked about admin staffing. I miss it. It was a long meeting, and we covered a lot of ground, and I think...
Transportation economy.
Yep, which is on our agenda for tonight, yeah. So, yeah, so lots of meetings this month, and I guess that's what I have for my four committee meetings that I've been in this last month. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Kirby? Thanks. I'm going to move to Melanie.
All right, the Region One Board didn't meet last month. It was snowing in northernmost regions, and some board members couldn't make it, so that was canceled. But, Special Education Cooperative met today. As everyone is aware, we voted in our special meeting last Monday to remove ourselves from the cooperative and provide special education services on our own through this district, and hopefully with an ability to collaborate with the cooperative for some low-incidence teachers and maybe for the Level Three classrooms. So today at the board meeting, the decision was reviewed, and plans were made, how to proceed forward. Shannon Erickson, the director, had a list of objectives she got authorization to pursue, find a new space, contacting an attorney about the separation agreement. There was discussion about personnel and facilities, because we have said we will need our facility back. So those were some of the highlights on that. And, let's see, I relinquished my role as chair for that board. It was, the tenor of the meeting was a little bit, I don't know, hostile, and so, given that environment, I thought it would be good for me to step down from that role. I'll still be a representative on that committee until we leave co-op on June 30th. And that was, I think, the summary. Any other highlights out of the meeting, Renee? Then we did personnel, and there's three or four people filling in for one position out on medical leave. There's still no special education teacher for either one Level Three classrooms, and so, some of that stuff results in just a constant churn of personnel. So that was, that was that board meeting. And then I asked to give an update on contract negotiations. Just a little refresher, when we talk about contract negotiations from a board perspective, we are allocated money from the state and legislature on how to run our schools over the, this year and next year. We've got a 6% increase for this year, and...
Four?
Oh, 4% for this year and 2% for next year.
Yes.
Yeah.
At least it would have been six.
Yeah. And out of that money, then we pay staff. 80% of our budget approximately is staff, but that same pot of money needs to be divided up for general fund projects, special ed pairs, you know, all the other programs and expenditures of the school. So knowing that, we went in with a 6% increase over two years. Our last offer to the teachers was 9.2% package. That was our last genuine offer. That could have resulted, depending on how the funds would be allocated, could have been a 3% salary increase, cost of living increase on the contract each year, or potentially a 5%, depending on how you spend the additional funds, whether it gets allocated for 403B contributions, insurance, our contribution toward insurance premiums, or a variety of other language items that come to the table to increase funding in different areas. So we did, and Matt will correct me if I'm wrong, but we gave a historically high offer for the settlement, at least for year one. Some of our staff would have seen a 12-point, 12% increase in one year on their salary. And nonetheless, we did not get any takers on that. The last offer from the union to us was 13.3? Or 8?
Two.
Two.
13.2% salary and benefit increase, cost to the district over two years. So we had a gap there that we were unable, felt we were unable to breach, and the teachers' unions filing for mediation. So that is a summary on that. I was looking for the page in the audit. They usually add one page that represents our funding sources to the school district. Not all funding is created, school funding's created equally. Our school district is in the lowest 5% of funds we receive from the community. So when there is an overall push for XYZ settlement across the board, just know that some school districts get lesser funding. There's sparsity aid, there's transportation aid, there's deep metro, man, we can't get anybody to work here aid. And we don't get any of that. But, so we are one of the lowest-funded districts on that score, which is a separate category of how money comes in. We just heard about a lot of that in the audit. But anyway, so that, that's something I kind of like to use this platform to reinforce that, even though there is a lot of comparison between districts, as there should be. We want our teachers fairly compensated. We want to attract the best and brightest, and we do consistently put a priority on putting a good salary on the table for our staff. So as to when mediation might occur, we don't know. We haven't heard back yet. So, anything to add, Matt?
No, I think for the most part, just on, you know, most languages has been tentatively agreed upon. There's a few language items out there still that, you know, have a cost to it that's excluding what is being offered right now. So, but I think for the most part, both sides have kind of, I mean, basically have kind of already felt like there wasn't really a lot of way to move closer to where we could get it to a finish. So that's kind of where you go to mediation for. And so, and like Melanie said, you know, historically speaking, and this is over 20-some years, Fergus Falls has always been in the bottom third of funding from the state, and that's just a fact. It's not something that's, but, you know, I will say this, that historically-wise, just on salaries-wise, we're probably in the upper third. So, so we do put our money where it should be, and I think that, but we also have to understand, too, that, you know, sometimes you just get to a point where you just, maybe a fresh pair of eyes, you know, the district has done, we have done mediation before, so it's not the first time or something like that. So, but hopefully, we can get it resolved, and we have in the past, and we'll move forward.
So those are my reports. Not quite as busy as Kirby's been, but any...
Busy in different ways.
Yeah. Any questions for me on any of that? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Ms. Hermes?
Okay, Policy Committee has not met recently, but I predict there will be a meeting soon. Why I?
Yeah, we have things going on. We have already MSBA revisions, and I have a file folder going.
I feel like they're going to carry on as we try to figure out all those different policies that were presented to us by the legislature last, or this past year. But the Staff Development Committee did meet on Monday, November 6th, and what, again, finalizing plans for the Staff Development Day, which is on December 1st. And in the morning, the keynote speaker will be Phyllis Braxton, and I have seen her during COVID. She was one of the presenters for the National School Board Association Conference. And so she'll be presenting on cultural competency training that teachers need to, when they are renewing their license, and so that's... And then, in the afternoon, there are two breakout sessions. And again, there'll be a variety of different sessions that teachers can participate in. Some of them are, Amelia Lamar, our curriculum director, will be presenting on ISTI standards. There'll be someone speaking on QPR, which teachers have asked for how, you know, to help with the suicide prevention training. And so QPR stands for Question, Persuade, Refer. And so someone from Lakeland Mental Health will be coming there, trauma-informed practices. I thought this was interesting, too, CPR training for ring dolls. That's going to be an offering, and then people, that staff that did not get a chance to participate last spring, in Alice training, will be able to participate in that. They need to sign up with the superintendent. So a variety of different things going on. And then also, again, the director, Krista Simon-Guard is the committee chair, I should say not director, and she is going, she's updating a staff development handbook so that staff will be able to access that, get their questions answered, and not just certified staff, right? Because staff development is also for our non-certified staff, our parents. And they are invited and welcomed and encouraged to participate in that Staff Development Day on the December 1st, for sure. So, that. And then we also approved a variety of different trainings that personal, that certified staff looks like for the most part had requested to go attend, so.
And you said the staff training funds are pretty well depleted?
Pretty well, yes. There's a little bit of money put back in. So I don't know if everybody watched the presentation last night on TV of the teachers at the Prairie Science School receive a special award, and so that, those funds, we, the school district decided to pay for those teachers to attend that and receive that. So that puts a little bit of money back in for those individual requests. So that puts a little bit of money back in the, for those individual requests.
Any questions for Misty?
All right, thank you. So my report is next. And Buildings and Grounds has not formally met, but it's kind of on docket here, I would say, in the next couple of months with all that we have going on. But the Wellness Committee did meet on November seventh last week. And Partnership for Health was there, and I would say the majority of the meeting was spent on our wellness policy. Talking through, they do a triennial assessment and just go through the different components of our wellness policy to see if we're meeting the criteria. And I think initially, the reason we engaged with them is they, they help assist with some funding, and they bring some great resources to the district from Otter Tail County. So it is a really good partnership and get some good conversation going about different things and suggestions and recommendations. And then Jen Cohors, the lead, just talked, they did a couple weeks of the Three Good Things Initiative for mental well-being, so that went out to the staff, via email, just a daily reflection piece. And then Lance spoke about some different things that they're doing in food service. If you follow him on social media, he's posting quite frequently all the fresh produce and the different things that they're trying to do to get away from prepackaged processed foods. And one of the things that he highlighted that he spent his abundance of funds on is a blast chiller, he called it. So it's a huge chiller that can preserve produce. So if they get an abundance of produce this time of the year, they can cut it all up and prep it and blast chill it, so they have stock for the winter time. And then he also used an example of keeping meat safe. So whereas before, in their typical freezers, they would freeze three hundred pounds of ground meat that they would cook off, and he said that would take at least a full day to sit in there and start to like chill and start freezing over. And with this blast chiller, they can put about three hundred pounds in there, and it will be chilled and frozen in about ninety minutes. So-
Gives me an idea.
So he, yeah, he just talked about all the different things they can do as they continue to evolve what they've got going on in food service. We talked a little bit about vending, and that's part of the wellness policy of what types of things should be in our vending machine, and just making sure that we're following that protocol and keeping things healthy. Energy drinks have been kind of a hot topic of discussion the last two meetings. So just doing a recheck of the vending and making sure there's nothing in there with caffeine and extra sugar. So, yeah, I would say that's the long and short of it. Oh, Lance did mention, this is kind of interesting, he, the breakfast serving, now that, now that breakfast is free, they serve about six hundred breakfasts at Kennedy School, Kennedy Secondary, and then about an additional five hundred between the rest of the district. So that's a significant increase from ever before. So that's pretty cool. Hopefully, that continues.
Any questions?
Yes, I read the minutes of that meeting, and it talked a little bit about students that arrive late on the bus, maybe weather, and so what is being done to allow those students to get a breakfast? Can they take it to their classroom?
Yeah, so he talked about, out at Lincoln School, they're, they've kind of piloted this process of students getting breakfast right in the classroom, and it's kind of like a brown bag breakfast, and doing something similar to that. His recommendation was literally like a five-minute, if there could be like a five or ten-minute buffer in there with the bus schedule somehow, that that would be adequate time for those students to get their breakfast. But then he also did say teachers have been pretty lenient if they would grab a brown bag to take it to the classroom and eat it in the morning. So there's been some flexibility.
Are those brown bags provided at the Theory Learning Center, too?
I don't know that. I'm not sure.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to Melanie.
So Minnesota High School League has not met. They don't meet until the end of November, so I don't have to share anything today.
You spent a lot of time in finance and activities as well.
Yeah. We had some other meetings, but we've all been covered, which is good.
Okay, so then we'll move on to our general consent items. We have the minutes from our October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three regular board meeting, and our special board meeting on November sixth, twenty-twenty-three. And then we'll go to Kirby for the bills and treasurers report.
Okay, bills and treasures. We'll start with the treasures report. We had just about three point eight million dollars in receipts into the general fund. It was a big month for receipts. We had one point eight billion in our local lovely, and one point five billion from the general ad. So lots of money coming in, also a fair amount going out. But our, our fund balance, we ended up at right around, without the construction fund, because that alters it quite a bit, and that money won't be there as we do the rest of Lincoln Phase Two. Right now, we have right around twenty-one million dollars in our, in our fund balance. And so that is, is up just a tad from about a million dollars from one year ago. So we're still doing well financially, and that's a good thing, as we saw in the audit report. As far as the bills, Steve came in early, and we sat down with Renee, and went through the, about fifty-two pages of bills. And some of the highlights, four hundred and some thousand dollars went to, for the, to purchase the property for the, across from the Prairie Wetlands, for a potential new school building. And we had the survey went out on that, and so there's, we paid for the postage and for the second half of the consultant that worked on the survey. So those bills were paid. We had a lot of Amazon bills, and we noticed a lot more where it says Amazon shipping charges of zero. So I think the memo went out, and I think most of the, most of the folks got the memo and have made use of the option of free shipping if you wait just a couple extra days. Renee noticed that we had a seventeen thousand dollar check that came in from Minnesota DOT, and it's like, why did we get that? And it was actually a grant that was supposed to go to the city of Fergus Falls, not to the school district. So we gave them their money back, and then it's gonna go back to the, back to the, to the city. Twelve thousand three hundred for the music trip was paid. And I'm gonna skip through all the Amazon, a lot of Amazon things on credit card. There's, there's interesting detail, and I'll get to one of those in a minute. Here's one, Acme Tulip, Tulip River of the North, seven hundred dollars for a delta oscillating bench spindle sander, which was a pass-through. That was one of the things that I did not mention that the Five Four Four Foundation paid for. High school football supplies, a lot of jerseys, and volleyball supplies, forty-two thousand dollars worth. Here's a pass-through, another pass-through from ECFE, some active panels for eight thousand dollars. Fergus Power Pump, we talked about that a little bit. We got a bill for twenty-four hundred dollars to clean out the porta-potties. And again, that's one of the things that we talked about with Derek at the activities meeting is for soccer games and football games, if we can change the fencing a little bit. We do have, we do have bathrooms there that are not being used because they're on the wrong side of the fence. And we would still incur a little bit of cost to clean those bathrooms, but this is twenty-four hundred dollars for the football games and soccer games that we had this year. Field turf tarquet, did some maintenance on the fields, about three thousand dollars worth. So Brian's Repair and Tire Service, we had a bill for thirty-seven hundred dollars because the trash compactor was, had some issues. So they did hydraulic repair and hydraulic oil. And so sometimes, sometimes it's interesting to see the details, sometimes it's not so interesting. So when they replaced some things on the trash compactor, part of the detail was that they had to remove the maggots from the bottom of the barrel. So anyways, thank you for sharing, right?
Yeah.
Yep. School nurse supply, Sir Toma, this is a pass-through of forty-eight hundred dollars for a hearing screener. And tech check, the paging system, nine thousand dollars, we pulled that a few meetings ago. And the last ones I have, Ari Morton, thirty-one thousand, and a little bit of Sparky's welding, which is Lincoln Phase Two. So overall, yeah, fifty-two pages of bills, a lot of them, probably about a fourth of them or a third of them are Amazon type things. So Steve, thanks to Steve for coming in early, and thanks to Renee for having everything there, so.
Any questions for Kirby?
Well, I was just wondering if the Amazon thing is, needs to be revamped? You know, if you've got all those separate orders going and all that kind of stuff, is it-
Takes a couple of days to-
Yeah, I would like to revamp the whole process of it, because it takes two to three days of just reconciling.
So is there just like a student account, or not a student, a staff account where they can just go shop and-
Mm-hmm. Yes, and so then it comes down to one person having to reconcile it at the end of the month, and it kind of becomes a nightmare.
And are there checks and balances on it as well?
Yes, yep, so she's gotta match up the packing slips, the P O, the invoice. And then two, if one order is placed, well, it doesn't mean the whole order ships at one time. So there's five lines on the order. One line might ship today, another line a few days from now, and so it's really a mess trying to match it all up with the hundreds of orders.
But yeah, the information we got now, because it's fifty-two pages, so here's one, for instance. It was lightning cables, nine nine eight eight, a short USB cable, eight seventy-nine, colored index cards, twenty-nine seventy-nine, Amazon shipping charge, sixty. So you're getting all this detail, line item, in this document. So as we go through the bills, we never, I've had this before until just a couple of months ago. So it's incredible the amount of detail you have, and it's interesting to follow up on some of those things, like with the compactor.
Yeah, I just wonder how other schools do that.
I did get some input, but it would require changes, some significant changes with other staffing as well, so.
Okay.
So something, something we should discuss, though.
We should, because it just seems like unfettered access to that is, doesn't seem proven.
Yep, well, yeah, they've had that for quite a while. But the good news is now we have the oversight twice a month to look through this.
Yeah.
And I think the other thing we should do with the shipping charges, it looks like most of them have taken advantage of it, but it seems like there's just one or two little pockets in the district that are, it seems like it's the same areas, so.